This is the small church.
Can we sit here?
Please rise for the flag of allegiance.
Flag of allegiance to the flag of faith and to the God which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Randy, would you reach in front?
Once again this evening on behalf of the Kimball Ministry Association and First English Lutheran and Cornerstone Community Church that I'm representing, thank you for allowing us time to share this evening prayer with you. Dear wise and heavenly father, first let us say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the major wealth that we need to fulfill our callings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in youthful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. In the scriptures you have said that people ought to obey the commandments, since you have established those very commandments to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore we pray for our mayor, our various levels of city officials, and in particular for the assembled gathering here tonight. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs of our residents of this city and county, confidence in what is good and fitting for our city officials, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is disagreement, and personal peace in their lives every day. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Ren. Meeting order and roll call.
Hi.
Here.
Robinson.
Present.
Morrison.
Present.
Arner.
Present.
You have a floor.
Do we have a motion to excuse councilperson Sunday?
Second.
A motion? Yeah, okay. All right, please vote.
All eyes.
As required by state law, the city of Kimball has available at least one copy of the open meetings act posted in the meeting room. Agenda items may be moved up or down on the agenda at the discretion of the mayor. Missions may not be made to this agenda less than 24 hours before the beginning of the meeting unless they are considered under this section. This section of the agenda and the council determines that the matter requires the emergency act. Uh, the only thing that I will mention before we get started is we will not be discussing the interlocal agreement with the village of Potter tonight because we haven't actually got that finalized and we will bring it back when we're ready to deal with that. So, under the consent agenda items, we have the minutes from the last meeting, claims and financials. It can be asked as a group or individually. Council, please serve and decide what we want to do.
Make a motion that we accept all nettes, claims and financials posted.
Your second?
Second.
Please vote. Thank you, council. Okay, and I apologize, I've got a little drainage in my throat and I clear my throat some, I apologize. So, we're under current business. The first business is discuss and approve the recommendation from the loan advisory board to approve a 15% forgiveness loan for Farm Bureau, Siobhan Singleton. This is part of every loan agreement we make, that if they make all their payments on time and uh, that when it comes down to the end that they could have this 15%. Is there anything you want to add to that?
That is correct, that is in our LV40 economic development plan, and Siobhan Singleton did make every single monthly payment on time and even a little bit more. So, we had the meeting last week and it was approved for the 15% forgiveness and that would amount to $7,500. The loan advisory committee has approved that, our council approval.
Discussion. Is there a motion to do that?
I make a motion to approve the recommendation of the loan advisory board to approve 15% loan forgiveness for Farm Bureau Financial Service, Siobhan Singleton.
Your second?
Second.
Please vote.
All eyes.
Next item on the agenda is discuss the date, time for the upcoming city council meeting on April 1st due to the United States Air Force Town Hall meeting at 6:00 PM at the high school. And we have been informed a little bit by the Air Force. One, one thing that they're requesting is that all elected officials are there, if they can see there. I don't anticipate a real long agenda for that meeting right now, and that doesn't either. Uh, we could move the date and time of that meeting up to four o'clock if possible, or we could pick another date.
Would it be possible to conduct the meeting at the location of the town hall after that meeting, so then the public that's in attendance to that could be a part of that? Hopefully we capture some residents that normally can't attend during, due to the time of day that our meetings normally are.
Up to you.
I think the hardest part of that, excuse me, would probably be pinning that time down because we're not sure how long we're going to talk for, and it, I'll elaborate more on my report about who's going to be there for the Air Force, so it might be a little lengthy. It's a good idea.
The agenda is not going to be lengthy that we were planning on for the first, why don't we just move it for one meeting this month?
Okay. That's what we're, that's what we're asking, so.
Or it's for too early. I'm there no matter what, so.
It'd be your opinion that we just have one meeting?
That's what Craig was saying.
Is it, are you making a motion for that?
Make a motion that we just not have the meeting and just have a single meeting next month.
I'll second that.
Okay, please vote.
All eyes.
Hey, the next item on the, on the agenda is ratify the changes to the volunteer, Kimball Volunteer Fire Department. In your packet, uh, adding one and removing two.
Question? I'll make a motion, we approve the changes for the volunteer fire department as presented.
Second. Please vote.
All eyes.
Hey, the next item on the agenda is consent and discuss and consider action on the Church of Christ property and update on asbestos testing. Then you're in your packet there, there is no asbestos in the building. Uh, I would like the council to consider uh, passing action that we tear the building down before, and then once you get the building tore down and the lot remediated, uh, turn it over to the CRA.
Are we, um, do we know where utilities are and everything?
There are no utilities, there have not.
There's nothing at all.
Long time. Before, before we do any demo, of course, we're going to still call it an 811, we'll still go out and do the normal, make sure their cable gets a hold of it and what kills energies out there. But it's something that we could handle internally, transfer it up to landfill C and D.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we remediate the property of the Church of Christ while doing our best to account for the cost associated with the landfill fees, and we transfer that to the CRA with the suggestion that when they are to sell it, they have a minimum masking price of the sell price of the property plus the estimated cost of the demolition, including time, by our employees and landfill costs.
I will second that.
Okay. Little wordy, sorry.
Is there? Please vote.
All eyes.
Hey, thank you. Okay, so then the next item on the agenda then will be discuss and approve matching funds of the Zero Fair Summer Program with KC, KCTS for Kimball residents. Carl Sander, you want to speak to that, please?
Good evening, I'm uh, for the record Carl Sander, I am a public relations for Kimball County Transit, I'm here representing Kimball County Transit. Also with, uh, I brought along for moral support, uh, maybe Christie Warner, the administrator of Kimball County Transit. I'd like to start tonight, um, with the conversation that I had not quite a year ago, it was the end of May, first part of June with mayor of Kimball, John Morrison. Uh, I made a statement at that time for John that, that I'm here out in the public that there's nothing to do for our kids in Kimball. I respectfully disagree with that statement. I think there's a lot of things to do in Kimball and I've, in your packet I named a few of them. We have a summer free lunch program at Mary Lynch that provides not only breakfast but also lunch. Uh, we have a summer library, uh, reading program at Kimball Public Libraries. We have baseball and softball programs, soccer programs. Um, then it's been brought to my attention that we're going to start back up the summer youth golf program this summer. We have a swimming pool, we have school sports camps coming up this summer. We have frisbee golf and basketball courts at the gearing or at the Gotti Park. Um, we have brand new playground equipment at City Park. We have the Fourth of July car shows and, and the high school class reunions coming up. And if nothing else for, you know, these young kids, uh, I can remember back when I was a kid, just hanging out with your friends. There's a lot of stuff to do in Kimball. That brings me back to when I was younger and I was raising my, my family here in Kimball, and my two girls would come up and they would say, Dad, you know, they would be nine, 10 years old. They said, Dad, um, we want to go visit Suzie down the block, and can you give us a ride? And I always said, well, no, you can walk. When I was your age, I had to walk halfway across town to get to school every day. And if I wanted to go see my friends, I had to walk all the way across town. So get on your bikes and go ahead and ride down two blocks and one block over and you can go see your friends. Uh, I got away with that for quite a while. Uh, if you don't know, I was raised in Dix. So, I made the mistake one day, I had the two girls with me, and we ended up in Dix and I was watching them and they kept looking at each other and then they'd look at me and then they'd look at each other, and finally one of them said, Dad, Dix is only four blocks square. So that gig was over. But I'm sure that people that grew up in Kimball or Sydney or Geering or any, any other uh, maybe a little larger town, they did the same thing. They walked to school, they rode their bikes across town to see their friends. Times have changed. Back in the 60s, it was a very safe environment for kids to do that kind of stuff. I even remember I would, when I was their age, I would ask mom, or we would ask mom, we'd like to go swimming. She goes, well, I'm kind of busy today, if you guys want to go swimming, get on your bikes and go. There again, I lived in Dix. We'd jump on our bikes and we'd ride to Kimball to go swimming, right down Highway 30. And it wasn't so bad because most of the time when we was on our way home, somebody would come by and with a pickup, and they'd stop and say, hey, you guys want to ride? And sure, we'd take our bikes, throw them in the back, jump in and, and they'd take us back to Dix. Sometimes we knew those people, sometimes we didn't. Today, times have changed, you don't do that kind of stuff. I guess, when I was talking to John, I said, you know, what, what is, uh, there's a barrier put up. Our kids today, is it safe for them to walk across town? Here in Kimball, we have two major highways, and they're, they're very busy with big trucks and cars and, uh, you know, we're, we're a mobile society, so everybody's running to get someplace and, and so these kids, they're sitting at home, they're living on this side of town, and they want to go swimming, but mom and dad, they're working. And mom says, you don't cross that highway, so they don't get to go swimming, or they don't go to the free lunch program, or they don't get to go hang out with their friends. And so, the conversation I had with our mayor, I said, can we take down that barrier? And that is the first of June last year, uh, the city of Kimball and Kimball County Transit partnered up and took that barrier down by offering rides and setting up a route, an inner city route inside Kimball, that these kids can jump on the bus safely, we'll take them to the pool, we'll take them to Mary Lynch, and take them out to ball practice. So that's, that's where we started, but it's questions, you might, you know, back in 2017, we start, uh, the transit had a major change. Back prior to 2017, we called it a handy bus. We had one bus and one driver, and they averaged maybe 20 rides a day. In 2024, the Kimball County Transit boarded over 40,000 rides. Now, one thing the county commissioners have always insisted, that we do not forget Kimball. The focus is Kimball residents, and if you look at the second page of your packet, I have a pie chart, and this is, uh, keep in mind, this chart is only for the first six months of this fiscal year. The colors in blue is, is Kimball County residents. That's approximately 60% of all the rides that Kimball County Transit provides. In 2024, of those 40,000 rides, approximately 25,000 of them were Kimball County residents. If you look at the rest of that pie chart, you can see Cheyenne County, Duell County, Banner County, all, uh, Scotts Bluff County, a lot of those numbers are riders riding our express route to come to Kimball to go to work in the morning. So, um, the transit has, has always focused on the Kimball residents. If you look at, um, the number at the bottom, the first six months of this year, we've boarded a little over 13,000, so we're on, we're on track to meet or exceed last year's, um, number of rides in Kimball County. You may ask, how did that program last, uh, last summer work? Well, I'm going to have to apologize right off the bat, part of the, uh, it was mediocre, I wouldn't, I'm going to say it was mediocre and that was my fault. As I mentioned earlier, our first conversation about an inner city route that hauls these kids around, and not, and not only the kids but adults too, uh, that, that conversation didn't start until the end of May. By the time the city council partnered with KCTS, and we had the opportunity to put the, the route, the route together, as well as, uh, we missed, we missed the whole month. We missed baseball season. Uh, if you also remember, uh, the city swimming pool was, had a delay because unexpected repairs, uh, so we missed part of the, part of the summer swimming with that. Uh, and by the time we got things up and running, uh, I think people kind of forgot that we were even doing this. So, so the numbers for the June, July, August was a little disappointing, and again, I would have to apologize for that. This year, we, we want to get our horse hooked up in front of the wagon, so we don't miss that, and I just about missed that also. Um, I've talked to Craig Markham, who is in charge of, or involved with the summer softball, baseball and soccer leagues. They're handing out the registration tomorrow. So, so we want to get information out there with, to these kids and also to their parents that this program is available. If you look at the next page of your, uh, end out, uh, you ask, you know, I'm up here talking about the kids, um, how many kids take advantage of riding the transit? Now, this is a, uh, these numbers here are a 12-month fiscal year, uh, number, and you can kind of look down, it actually breaks it out to where we took them, where we picked them up, Mary Lynch Swimming Pool, Library, um, Catholic Church, Catholic Church has a program, the CCD program on Wednesday night, we pick up the kids from school, take them right over to that. The golf course, um, we've got some daycares sitting there, so total, total number of kids, when I say kids, uh, I'm talking about youth 18 and under. The program that we ran last summer, June, July, August, um, it was a free ride to, for these kids. At the end of that program, uh, the transit thought it was important enough, um, that we continued the free rides for, uh, youth 18 and under, so that, that program is continued, uh, all year round. Uh, if you look at these numbers, we have boarded, um, for a 12-month period, over 12,000, 12,550 youth have ridden that bus. If you look back at the pie charts, we're on target, um, to board total Kimball people, uh, adults, kids, everybody in between, about 26,000. So, I'd add, almost half of the riders on these, on the transit are youth 18 and under. I think by continuing this program, we take down that barrier, and I think by getting in front of them in a timely manner that we're trying to do right now, uh, where they're fully aware of it, um, I think we'll have much better success. We can get these kids, um, out and about this summer and, and enjoying the summer. Quality of life, I believe, goes up as these kids get out and, and get some fresh air. Um, so the next page is a flyer that we have prepared that will go out with, um, the registrations tomorrow at the schools, uh, to promote this program, and I guess what I'd like to do at this time is I would like to encourage and ask the city council to partner with us again, uh, to promote the summer, uh, youth, youth and adult free rides for June, July and August. Um, just a little change on that, last year, the city council approved $15,000. Last year's route, we've made some adjustments, and with last year's route, we was running two buses to run that route. We have, um, made like, made some adjustments, and today we can run that route with one bus, so it's not going to cost quite as much to run that route, and, um, I'd, I would like the city council to consider a partnership with KCTS of $10,000.
Thank you, Carl. Questions? Questions for Carl?
Thank you for your presentation. Uh, I was a little confused with your data sets, where you're going with things based on the numbers and, uh, until you kind of looped it in, but I'm more curious about the data set for riders for the June, July, August time period. Do you have that information available?
Specifically for, um, all riders, where's, I do.
The under 18.
So the, consider, the last year since we did all riders and not just kids, I don't specifically have a data set just for the kids, I can tell you how much, like, all of the rides, um, for the program were, but I don't have them broken down by kids, adults versus kids because we had everybody ride free. But I can definitely, I do have those numbers if you'd like them, it'd take me just a second to grab them for you.
I think that's beneficial.
Sure.
And then, if I'm so inclined to ask, how was the funding established for the rest of the year that you're able to do the funding outside of this three-month window? Can you speak to where that was coming from?
Perfect. Yeah. So, what I did provide you, um, was just, I took our total amounts that we are budgeted and I broke it down just for what it costs to run the in-town routes. So, I did, uh, in the little gray underneath is the total budgeted amount for those line items. So, the way that we pay for, um, our in-town route is actually through earning money via Medicaid, so our insurance rides, when we take insurance rides, um, when we, the advertising on the buses, that type of stuff, and then even for some of our sponsored routes. So, some of our sponsored routes, they make a little bit of excess money, and then that excess, uh, match money is what supports the in-town route. So, there is no actual funding for the in-town route, it's, it's never, it's always been that way. Um, when we only had 7,000 rides a year, when they were talking about the handy bus, then it was all property tax dollars, right? So the property tax dollars covered that. Then as we grew, uh, and there were more riders, then we took on the Medicaid rides, so that that's what started to fund it. And then obviously, as we've taken on the express routes, the worker routes, those are sponsored, and so some of those funds not only pay for that route, but then fall into helping support the in-town route. Um, and then the other piece of it is now, which doesn't get heard of much, but because we lease vehicles and we rent a, a building from the county, we're a separate fund, so by state statute, a separate fund can run almost independently, but not quite, right? And so, we actually lease vehicles from the county, um, so we pay for the car notes plus their admin fees and that type of thing, so the county then makes, um, some funding off of that, right? And then they can choose what to use that for. So even now, when they give us the dollars, it doesn't come from property tax dollars anymore, it comes from, um, money they earned off of us. So, those are the different funding sources that, that we use for that. Um, you know, Chapel in Duell County and Buckley Trust pay for, for their, you know, cover their items, and even when you talk about Sydney, um, Cheyenne and Scotts Bluff, you know, the federal tax dollars, um, that come from that, and then the Medicaid, a lot of the Medicaid rides do come from out of county, not that we don't take Medicaid rides here in Kimball, but obviously the Medicaid is different than fares, and so it can be used as match money. Um, one of the things to consider is the fares that we charge actually come off the top of the grant. One of the things to consider is the fares that we charge actually come off the top of the grant and is reduces the amount that we reimbursed through the grants. So not only do we have to come up with fares or not, but then we have to come up with the matching funds. And so dollar for dollar, it's actually for about every $1 in matching funds, it would take about $5 in fares to equivalent the same spending power. And I can obviously get you a, a full budget if you'd like to see the full budgets.
I'm mainly just interested in, earlier today, in the county's commission meeting, you had mentioned that last year's in-town fares were $1,400.
$1,400, yeah.
And so, and then also the transit is 25 cents for the first 75 miles. So I'm assuming most of the transports around town are, are the bus route. This is single transit rides, correct?
So no, there's, the, the 25 cents per mile is on-demand services. So we have different types of services, right? So on-demand versus routed. And so the routed is $2 a day or $20 a month to ride, to do the in-town services. On-demand is when we, generally, it's almost always out of town. Sometimes it's out in the county. So for example, if somebody lives out in the last corner of the county and we have to bring them into town, that is per mile. But once they're in town and on the routed service, it's just a flat rate. And again, the, the $1,400 in fares comes off the top and it doesn't, it is not the same as the matching dollars. And so I just want to be clear that what we're asking for on that $10,000 is the match money to support the bus running for those three months. So it's not the same as fares that somebody would pay. It's the actual matching dollars that we have to come up with.
Trying to see if that's vis-à-vis, if these individuals were to ride as a fare and not the route, you know, what's getting us the most bang for our buck? I personally am faced with a dichotomy of, on one hand, I do think that this is a phenomenal program. I think it's excellent, and I want to do everything we can to support the youth of our community. But on the other hand, I, I think it's a little bit unfortunate timing because I would personally rather see this as a budgeted line item rather than just a request for funds. And so I, that's my personal opinion. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, and I don't want to speak for them. But I don't know if we could sit down and formulate a way to cover this program and come up with something unique to solve the solution for this year, get this on the budget agenda and something that we create a line item for in the future, so we can continue this program. So almost like a stopgap this year, that would be my recommendation, if we can sit down and figure something out with that. Because I do want to continue this program, but I think that we need to realign it and get it appropriate to be in that discussion for the line item.
I would love to, to sit down during your budget season and, you know, discuss just the permanent, or I shouldn't say permanent, but yearly line item. We'd love to do that.
So, so that leaves, leaves the problem of how do we maintain this program this year? And I don't know if we can be ingenuative with that and come up with a plan to figure out how we can realign this. That's kind of where I'm at right now, but.
I'd like to see us try. I think we have to remember is we have a lot of low-income families. The kids are, but they do have cell phones, and they have their Jason cell phones of eight, 12 hours a day. We didn't have cell phones growing up, so we had to play outside. Kids don't go outside unless there's something that really, really of interest to them. And last year, like you were saying, we didn't really get to talk about this thing until June. We're already, you know, behind the eight ball. We're still in March. And I think from what I understand from the discussions is that even last year, we were moderately successful. Even moderately successful, we're getting kids out and giving them opportunities to get their face out of a cell phone and social media. I think that's an investment that we make in our kids and figure out a way to make sure we get into a line item next year. But I guess I'm, I'm for figuring out how we, how we can support it this year with the understanding that budget time, we decide to put it into us as a line item if we want to carry it forward. But then we talk about it, I think, for the budgeting period. Summer's probably basically over, and we can get a good accounting of that.
Yeah.
Any input, Greg?
Well, I just, I'm a little concerned. I'm a little bit like Austin. I, I, I love the program. I wish that it was something that was in our budget, if, if we were going to do it and not going to be coming every year to ask, ask for money. It, it seems a little pricey to me. But I can't make heads or tails of the numbers good enough. And that's not anything about you. I don't know how to read pickups and drop-offs. To me, in my simple mind on your chart, on this chart here, it looks to me like you lost 1,102 kids at Mary Lynch, because you picked up 4,803, dropped off 3,700. There is a print. I don't know how to interpret your numbers.
They're lost out there wandering.
Yeah, exactly. I'm having, I don't really know exactly how to interpret the numbers.
And the, and the reason they are broken down is so you'll have sometimes, for example, the parents might have us taking them to school, but then the parent picks them up after their work or, or vice versa. They, you know, their, their parent drops them off at school, but then they need, you know, a ride to the library or, or a ride home or whatever the case. Same thing with the li, the library is actually a really great one to use on those numbers. You know, so we drop off a lot of kids at the library, and then they'll be there till their parents get off work. So we don't pick them up from the library to take them home, as an example. So that's where some of those significant differences come into. Same thing like the Catholic Church, you'll see that we drop them off, because we've picked them up from the school, dropped them off at, you know, the Catholic Church. And then by the time that's done, their parents are picking them up. So that is why there's the differences in, you know, picking up and dropping off. Same thing with the pool. While we know that sometimes we drop the kids off at the Mary Lynch for meals in the summertime, and then they, they walk across to the pool. So we don't actually get to count the pool drop-off, right? But we dropped them off to get their, their hot lunch, and then they, you know, hang out and, and go to the pool. So that's why some of those numbers seem, you know, we just, we can't track quite all of that because of those kinds of things. But definitely, that is where the distinguishing factors come in to those numbers and why they're not equal, per se. And then, you know, the, the price, I guess, is again, just that reminder that we're, what we're not, we're not asking you to cover the person's fares. What we're asking you to cover is the matching dollars to run, you know, to run those routes for the, for those three months. So that's where I think the price difference comes into as well. Because we still have to come regardless of the fares. And I think it'd be interesting to, and I will definitely during budget season, bring those samples for you. So if we went from $1,400 in fares to zero, right? The, the match money doesn't change very much. I mean, it's, it's crazy how it doesn't change hardly at all. And so we still got to come up with all of that money, whether we have the fares or don't have the fares. And so that's why, when I ask you the dollars and you talk about, you know, fares just seem very different than, than matching dollars.
What's the length of the new route in miles?
So it's, I would have to figure that out, because we zigzagged quite a ways through it. I can actually tell you the, the route, so.
I'm just looking for a rough estimate, because I'm trying to shoot from the hip and get some numbers here.
Sure, sure.
If it's five miles, then technically, by your single ride fare, that's $1.25, right? For the five miles. I'm just trying to see if it's more economical if we, for this season, if we just have a smaller fund for single fares and manage it that way versus supporting this until we get it as a line item.
Right.
I, I think the best data set, which I think was missed a little bit, would be the number of under 18 riders for the June, July, August time period. Which is something I would like to see, because then we could calculate, we may not have the distance or travel, but we have a rough estimate of average traveled distance. Then we could see if we could cover that with a smaller amount of money. My question is, what would happen to this program if we weren't able to contribute this year?
Well, you're looking at a woman who is all about get her done one way or the other. So when I get done asking you, I'll go ask someone else, right? At some point, we'll, we'll make sure it gets covered. I mean, we'll just keep asking until we find somebody that, that puts in some dollars. You know, and at the end of the day, whether we ask for, you know, a different company to, to sponsor it or whatever, we're going to make sure it happens. It's just that the, when it comes back to the city of Kimball, right? This is specific to the city of Kimball, and that's why we come to the council first, because I think it's a longstanding piece of the county puts in their dollars, which cover, you know, lots of things as well. And so we would like to see the city put in specifically for, for their routes. And obviously, we understand that every person's budget is tight, and LB, you know, 34 makes everybody a little nervous about what that looks like moving forward. But, you know, we'll continue to take Medicaid rides and, and do all the things that we need to do to make it happen, so.
I will say personally, where I'm at with this is, I think it's difficulty just not being in the budget. I want to see in the budget. I'm a huge proponent of this program. Whether it's one ride or a million, it's worth it to have a kid get out and basically get where it needs to go. I don't think that this is the proper avenue, but I am willing to help you find those ancillary means. So I'm volunteering my time to meet with you to find that ancillary funding for this temporary stopgap of one year till we can get a line item and get that established for however long we establish it. So that's my recommendation, is to offer my services, table this or kill the issue and work with you to find ancillary funding through Keno Funds or whatever we need to do to make this work and get it on the agenda for our.
Sure.
Any other discussion?
Back to the numbers again. So if you pick, if you pick a kid up and drop them off, is that considered one ride or two rides?
No, every time they get on the bus, it's, that's a boarding. So when they get on at their home or wherever they're at to go somewhere, that's one. And then when they get on the bus to go home, that would be a second one.
I would just say, I would like to, at least at this point, agree with Austin. And I think to table this would be the appropriate thing to do. But go ahead, Craig. I won't make a motion yet until you speak your piece.
Before we, before we move forward on that, I just, right now, so they're going out for baseball this week, and we're going to start to happen. I agree, we need to have an accounting, but I also think we need to just, the city government can serve the people. And these are getting kids out of the house. And I think we, we can move forward, get an accounting at the end of this and either adjust the budget based on what the final numbers are for what, if we decide to support it going forward or not. Maybe after, if the, if the accounting shows that they used all those dollars, great, then we made a good investment. If not, then we adjust the budget for that delta also. But I'm, I'm for moving ahead. I'd like to see this thing. We're supposed to be serving the people. We have a lot of low-income, single-family, both parents working, and the kids have nowhere to go but in a damn phone. Need to move away from that. It's time to start investing in the community. So that's where I'm at.
I, I certainly don't want my point to be is that we're not investing in the community. I, I firmly believe in that. I just wonder if there's other ancillary pathways for funding this other than.
As Carl already apologized for, you know, we're almost on, behind a, behind the curve again. And here it is, Mars. So I would like to see this move forward with, with a very strong recommendation that this, we analyze it.
Can we, can we utilize Keno Funds for part of this, for any, by any method?
Public service.
Yeah, and it's community better, man, I think.
Yeah, community better, right, thank you.
So would that be, because technically, is the KCTS for-profit or nonprofit?
We're technically a government entity.
So then we could do the 3,000, 3,000, right?
Yeah, that would be an option.
May I make a, may I make one more statement? So obviously, I've sat on the council and I understand. And so my, my thing is, is if you guys are willing to sit down and, and try to figure, work something out, right? Whatever, whatever it is. We definitely are willing to know that you guys will honor that and, you know, put the flyer out with the school and make sure that we're ahead of the game. And then, you know, and then come back for a, you know, a final decision. I, I understand that, you know, it's government, and everybody wants to make sure that they're using their tax dollars the, the best way they can. And I have no problem with that. And I do believe that we can come up with, you know, some mutually agreeable place to be. So we're, I am absolutely willing to go ahead and, and put out the flyer that has the Kimball, you know, logo and, and that type of thing with the school kids, when they send out the baseball and soccer forms, knowing that we would come back to you guys, you know, at a different meeting to, to wrap this up.
With the plan of coming in during budget season.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Christine.
Do we have a motion? Make a motion to table this discussion until, well, we're not meeting April 1st, till April 15th.
April 15th, yeah. Second. Okay.
Made a motion to table till our next council meeting, which is April 15th.
Good. Do you have a second? So please vote.
All ones?
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is discuss and consider recommendation from BPW to approve the bid from Johnson Services for the wastewater pipe lining project in Sunnyview. And Jim, would you please bring us up to date on that?
You have the bid from Johnson Service Company out of Carney in your packet. Amount is $66,050. And if you look at the back of that page, you see a map with orange and yellow lines. That's the sewer lines that would be done. And what they do is they go, number one, they go through with a camera and locate any problems there might be, clean out any roots that would be there, and then they put a liner inside the existing sewer line. They also take time to seal all of the joints from the individual houses. The reason this area has been picked is it's a problem area, and it's largely due to roots getting into the sewer lines. When you compare the $66,000 to the cost of replacing sewer lines, it's a whole lot cheaper. We did some, last year, the long-range plan is to keep moving from the eastern end of Kimball toward the west. Each year, we'll take another section. So to me, it's a real bargain. It's going to help avoid those backups into somebody's basement. It's going to help on our, the time that our crew has to do in maintenance. So to me, it's a win-win. I really recommend you approve this.
And it was approved by the Board of Public Works.
Does, does the liner stop roots? Will the, the inside liner, will that stop it because of the, what it's made out of? Or are they still going to get in there over time?
Craig said it will stop, calling me somewhat skeptical, but it's got to be a lot better than.
And, and what about if you have to
Jut it out?
Routhe the line or whatever, does it stand up to that type of?
It's my understanding that it does, yes.
What's the expected lifespan useful life of this liner?
I can't.
Highly variable. I don't know if they gave you an industry standard for it or not, but.
And not discuss that.
Well, I was still on the board when we talked about this, and I, I think it's something that we do need to do, and I agree with the program to keep. As long as we keep seeing that it's successful, we keep taking care of those tough spots.
Jack's from the board here, could you?
I basically did the same thing in my sewer in my backyard. Best plumbing did it. And they just pull out the sleeve, that black plastic, it's a hard resin, I guess. And didn't have to, they dug two little holes in my backyard, and that's the only thing that was ever disturbed. They said it would, should last as long as the first 70, 60, 70 years. Yeah, I'm happy with it. The cost wasn't that bad at all.
Started doing this, oh, years ago, we did the main down north side, on the north side of the yard. And it's, it's easy, it's quick. We could, like Jim noted, we aren't digging up streets, we aren't closing down houses, no. Making a mess and replacing concrete to the tune of, you know, half a million dollars. So this is just the way forward. We do budget every year for this. We've budgeted $75,000 for this. Along with this project, we will be rebuilding two manholes in that area. Sunnyview is one of our older subdivisions, so it's one of our hotspots as far as making sure we get stuff taken care of and remediated. as far as making sure we get stuff taken care of and remediated. Um, and as you'll see, Johnson Service Company, we've worked with them for a couple of years. They've been great. They asked Craig when we were, when we were talking about this, can't we be flexible? You know, and move with them for mobilization? We said, absolutely, we just want to get it done. So they reduced the mobilization by nine thousand dollars. So we we saved some bit of money just being flexible. But they've been great to work with over the last several years.
Okay. And the reason two manholes will be redone is to bring them up to compliance. And as long as the state sees that we have a a process, an annual plan to replace those as we go through, they give us a little bit of grace on the ones that are out of compliance.
I'll make a motion to can uh to approve the BPW's recommendation to approve the bid from Johnson Services for the wastewater pipelining project in Sunnyview.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Please vote.
All ones.
Thank you. Next item, so you get to stay there, Jim. Discuss and approve recommendations from the BPW to approve the contract with Olson Engineering for the interceptor sewer line project.
Want to say anything, Doug?
Oh, I mean, yeah, I'll just start off with this, why you want to do your lining every. Because otherwise you end up in this situation that that we're in now on some of these other lines. Now, granted, the lines we're talking about is, the issue is an undersized line. That's why we can't simply line them. Not only line a pipe, you're putting a new material through the existing pipe, can't change the size. Um, so anyway, uh, this is what we've been talking about for a while. Uh, the sewer report we did, you know, listed these couple areas as needing to be replaced, needing to be upsized. Um, so this is what you've got in front of you is the engineering contract for that work. Yep.
Was the one discrepancy in the number updated?
That's actually on the, that's the next, that's the next line item. Yep.
So thanks for mentioning that, Doug, because that is, that is important for people to understand. Here we are talking about saving money to to line pipes.
Yes.
Have a certain sized pipe in order to be able to line it. What we're looking at are pipes that are four inch that we need to upgrade in the first.
Uh, they are six inch and they need to be eight inch. Um, and not only, you know, you can get away with six inch pipes in a sewer system, not in the location they're at on your system. Uh, you got quite a bit of flow coming there. Um, if you.
Bernoulli's.
What's that?
Something about Bernoulli's principle and speeding.
Yes, yes, exactly that. And just simply, they're overflowing or they will be overflowing um when you get the development down south. Um, so yeah, the state allows you to have, I think it's up to six hundred feet of six inch pipe at the very tail end of the system. And that's the most you can have and it can never have anything else hooked up to it. So, I mean, it's services, but no other, other mains.
And we have things hooked up to this line.
Hey, there are quite a few mains coming up to this line, yeah.
Great, twenty three to be exact on the first one.
Right, services, there are twenty, twenty three services in that downtown. When I call it downtown, that area down, down south there, there's twenty three services. I know you asked that last time, so.
Yeah, I went out and scoped it, so that's great.
Yep, yep, so I went out and scoped it, yep. Um, yeah. So this is the engineering contract to do the design um on those two chunks. Uh, we'll get our surveyors out here, take a look at everything, start putting together a design. See ready to fit those replaced. Um, I can answer some of your questions, Austin, on the um, on the lining that you're doing. I know this is kind of out of order, sorry. Um, when when they do that lining, that resin becomes the pipe. From an engineering standpoint, it is the pipe now. Um, technically, we usually assume twenty five year lifespan on those, but that's a bare minimum. And usually, well, the technology hasn't been around that long, but really, truthfully, we're expecting fifty years or more out of those pipes. Um, as far as stopping roots, they will stop roots as well as the original pipe did when it was first put in. That's not to say you won't get roots in there eventually. Again, that comes back, that's your twenty five years. The other problem that we have sometimes is if the roots infiltrate a service that's coming into the main, they'll work their way up the service and actually come in through the service. You can still get roots in there, but i- it's a lot, yeah, a lot less, so.
A YouTube pipelining nerd, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's one thing I'll, I'll just go ahead and mention it to you too. We've got an option on that six inch pipe down there. I saw, I said you can't wind it. We're going to look at the possibility of pipe bursting it. I don't know, have you done any research on that? Yeah, it is, it is. The problem is with twenty three services in two blocks, you're still ripping up a huge chunk.
Yeah, I'm concerned with that because of those connections. And if we have Orangeburg, then we can fracture upstream. So then that becomes problematic. I don't want any to rise to the homeowner.
Right.
So that's probably perclusive to that, but.
So something that we'll look at, yeah.
Great, thank you, Doug.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the contract with Olson Engineering for the interceptor sewer line project.
Second.
Please vote.
All ones. Carrie's.
Okay, next item on the agenda is discuss and approve the recommendation to the council to approve the mayor's signature on the contract with Apple Construction for the wastewater treatment plant project.
Okay, this is another step in the process. Um. Those contracts been reviewed by Olson, been reviewed by USDA, been reviewed by board members, the Board of Public Works, been reviewed by the city attorney. It's in your packet, you've had the chance to re- to review it. I'm sure you read, enjoyed reading all of that.
I mean, what?
But uh, the language in there is language specified by USDA to get it up to their specifications on the way they wanted it worded. Other than that, it's pretty much cookie cutter language, which some blanks filled in.
I will say there was one error noticed by the uh city attorney. Um, there was an issue with the contract itself and the contract number that's in the contract versus the letter that they sent us and their contract number in there. Pretty sure we know what what the issue was, but um, Apple is going to send us a letter correcting the number. Contract is correct, the the letter that they sent us is correct. But. So we were intending for a motion, intended to do that.
I did verify that with the Department of Labor, that 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 number in the contract is correct. It's just a letter where it was mistyped, something.
Well, in that case, I salute.
Okay. Second. Second. Okay, please vote.
All ones.
Okay. Thank you. Now we're down to the reports. Um, that was the mayor's report. And I don't have a whole lot to report other than just some comments I want to make. I'm pleased, especially with the BPW and advancing programs that are improving Kimball. The upgrade to the sewer systems are a good start and and a good program. The next big projects that need to be addressed by this council are getting funds for streets and getting new housing, housing built as well as refurbishing existing housing. Finally, I encourage everyone to attend the Air Force meeting that's going to be at six P M, April first. Uh, we haven't got a whole lot of input. Uh, Annette will give you some more of what's going to happen there. But the Air Force uh really would like a good turnout. They would like all elected officials there and uh all all landowners that are in uh, have communication lines going across their land and the public. So uh, I'm I'm optimistic about that meeting, so I encourage anybody to go to that. So the next thing, uh, we have reports from all council members. Uh, this will be, we got it on here again and we'll go ahead and do that tonight. But from now on, that's will be once a month that we will get the reports from the council members.